This rise, this August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called to order. I'd ask for Cliff Cruz to provide our invocation this evening. Please remain standing after the invocation for the pledge to the flag.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we just so thankful that we can gather here in a potent place and take care of the business of the city. Lord, we pray your blessings on this meeting. We pray for wisdom. We pray for guidance. Lord, we are thankful that we live and work in a community like this that have so many good people that work so hard to make it better for everybody. Lord, be with us in this meeting, guide us and direct us, and God bless America. All these things, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Cruz, for providing the invocation for us this evening. We're going to begin our council meeting with some special presentations. We have some employees who have worked with the city for a number of years, and we want to recognize their service. And we also have our quarter, our Employees of the Month for our first and second quarters of 2024 that we also want to recognize for their excellent service to the community. I'll ask for Mayor Protem Tess Godfrey to come down to the front so she can help hand out the pins and the plaques, and for our City Manager, Mr. Powell, to provide us information about each of the employees who are being recognized tonight.
Sure. We'll start with Chris Edmund from the Police Department. I don't know if Chris is going to be here or not. There he is. There he is. All right, very good. Chris is being recognized tonight for completing his 10th year of service with the City of Dublin on March 31st of this year. Chris works in the Police Department. He does a great job there, and we are so thankful for his dedication to the city.
Thank you, Chris.
Next up, we have Mr. Derek Jackson. Derek has also completed his 10th year with the City of Dublin as of March the 10th of this year. He works as a meter reader for the city, which is a very important role, makes sure everybody's water bills are accurate. So we thank you for your dedication and service to the city, Derek. And next up is Mr. Daniel Anderson. Daniel has completed his 30th year of service with the City of Dublin. He currently works in the Police Department. He had worked in the Police Department before and also has worked in our Purchasing Department, and he has been an employee for 30 years as of July the 8th of this year. So, Daniel, thank you very much for your longtime service to the City of Dublin. And we've previously recognized Ms. Helen Chambers. She received her 20-year pin, and we gave that to her a couple last week, actually. And so she wanted to do that in the privacy of the water plant, so we did that there. She's not much for being in the spotlight. Next up, we have two special recognitions also. We have our Employees of the First Quarter of 2024, and that is Mr. Gerald Thigpen. If I could have Mr. Gerald come down. He's acting shy. Gerald is the mechanic supervisor at the automotive shop. He started as an automotive service technician and worked his way up to supervisor role. He is the type of person that everyone wants on their team. He has a wealth of knowledge with a great personality. He trains and guides the whole department on how to handle all issues that occur with vehicles. He's the type that is willing to help out anyone and everyone regardless of the situation. He always goes the extra mile, not only for the department, but for every department to ensure that all vehicles and equipment of the city are in the best condition possible. Along with assisting the departments with their automotive needs, he also provides guidance to the department heads with planning for new long-term assets as far as purchasing new equipment and new vehicles. He is truly the backbone of the team, and they don't know what they do without Gerald. So congratulations on being named Employee of the First Quarter for this year. Next up is Mr. Matt Slaughter. Matt is the Employee of the Second Quarter for 2024. He began his employment with the City of Dublin on January 21st, 2011. After working for a local private electrical contractor gaining experience in electrical and construction activities, he started working for the Gas Department as an equipment operator and was promoted to crew leader before taking the position in the Engineering Department of Engineering Aid in April of 2017. The experience and knowledge he gained about the city's natural gas system was a great fit for his new responsibilities in engineering. He also became the primary single maintenance person who is on call evenings and weekends to respond to any traffic signal issues that arise. And with the storms we've had lately, I know you've been coming out for that a lot. Matt's very dedicated to all of his duties. His foundation in the Georgia Department, and I'm sorry, the Gas Department and working on signals prior to his employment with the city have made him a great addition to the team. He's never turned away from taking on new responsibilities in the area of project management, water, sewer, storm, transportation, and many other responsibilities of engineering overseas. He has a great attitude and has never been one to say, that's not my job. If another department is in need of assistance, he's willing to help and serve to the best of his ability. He is very loyal to the city and its employees. He works every day to make sure he is doing his part to leave it better than he found it. Matt's a shining example of an employee who deserves recognition for doing his job every day and doing it well. And so he is a great, it's a great privilege that you've been named the Employee of the Second Quarter for 2024. Congratulations.
You know, the city really is fortunate to have so many dedicated employees. It's been a real pleasure over the last couple of years to get to know so many of you guys. And, you know, it is amazing how many of the city employees go above and beyond to help with citizens' issues all the time. So really appreciate all of you, all of the employees, but especially the ones who have received the recognition this evening. Okay, before we get into our first agenda item, do we have a motion? A motion regarding the agenda? Is there a motion to amend the agenda as discussed at pre-council?
Yeah, I make the motion to amend the agenda as so discussed regarding item number five.
Okay. We have a motion to amend the agenda to remove item number five. Do we have a second to that motion? We have a second to that motion? All right, as discussion on this motion, at our last council meeting, the City Council heard comments from approximately 40 citizens regarding the Stubbs Park concept plans, in particular, the fate of the Stubbs Park Gym. And after discussion over the past week and at our pre-council meeting, I believe I'm accurate in saying that it's the consensus of council that we would like for staff to provide additional information regarding the cost of renovation of the Stubbs Gym and also the, as an alternative, the cost of building a new activity center along with covered basketball courts. So something that was not available at the last meeting, which we wanted to show the public now as a potential that council is asking for staff to explore. The cost of would be a brand-new activity center which could be used for a voting precinct, for after-school programs, for community events, for birthdays, with a catering kitchen, and basically a multipurpose activity center at Stubbs Park. These are some concepts of what such a center might look like. This is a existing club activity center that sort of provides an idea of what that might look like with a large central area that could be used for voting, for classes, for meetings, for reunions, for birthdays, along with an office space for our Parks Superintendent and a catering kitchen. If you can flip to the next concept. These are just some views of the idea of what the activity center might look like, and this would be a new construction-type center. And then along with that, recognizing that the gym would not be available would be covered basketball. And that would be available to, for kids or adults to use at any time without having to open the door for a gym. So this is one of the alternatives, but we also wanted to get the cost of renovating the existing facility as well with the idea that the more information we have, the more specific information, the more details that we have, we can make better decisions. So I think that everybody appreciated the input that we received at the last meeting, and it has given us an understanding that we need to hit the pause button. Nothing is happening with Stubbs Gym for the next year, at least a year, year and a half anyway, so there's no need to rush into a decision. So let's gather some additional information before we do something, before we make a final decision. So that's my understanding based on our pre-council discussion. Is there anything that council members would like to add? Yes?
Also, remember, we decided not to do a pond over there. We discussed not doing a pond.
Right. Yeah, so I want to discuss the pond issue. That was, I think, for me, one of the things whenever I heard one of the kids come up and talk about his sister, who was young, and he would go over to the park and maybe his sister was out there and the potential danger for that. You know, there are some stories that we heard that I think that were, helped us see this from a different perspective. And based on that, one of the recommendations that we've discussed is, instead of having a pond, is to take the existing creek that is there and just daylight it, basically from the point where it was piped under the school. When they built the school, they put the creek, a portion of the creek underground. And so the idea would be to daylight that, to dig up those pipes and let the creek flow naturally the way it was previously, so that you would have that creek extending all the way through the property. Now, the creek is not deep, so it doesn't present the same kind of hazard that a pond might have, but at the same time, it's a water feature, so it could be beautiful and landscaped. And so that is something that council has indicated that they would like for us to work with the landscape architect, is to figure out how we can make this, keep the beauty of the area, keep the green space, have some water, but not have the potential danger of a deeper pond. So one of the things that would be explored by the landscape architect is how to daylight that creek. Any other comments from council members?
And also, we talked about a potential splash pad at some point, possibly.
One of the ideas that was discussed was that if we build a new activity center, that it would be near the playground, and that because there would be restrooms that would be associated with the activity center, you would be able to put a small splash pad in that zone, too. Now, of course, all of this is still at the concept phase, but we got to price this out to understand what's possible and what's not possible. So I think this is very exciting, and we certainly appreciate all the substantive comments and the sharing of perspectives that we had at our last meeting. Anything else?
Can I just add, I know that there was a town hall meeting held where some members of the community were able to voice concerns about different things, and Oconee Gym was discussed as well. You know, the city took over maintenance and operation of the city parks on July the 1st, and knowing that the Oconee Gym renovation was coming very soon after that transition took place, it did not make sense for the city to invest in hiring additional staff at this point in time, or at least not full-time staff, to oversee the gym, to keep it open the full hours of the day until that renovation takes place. We're looking at a timeline of sometime in October that it would need to go offline and the construction work would begin. And so to accomplish that, my thought process was to keep the gym open in the afternoon. I kind of consulted with some folks on when it was mostly being used, and in the afternoons, we've tried to have people there to keep it open in the afternoons. We've had someone that was going to provide that service but then backed out. We now have two people that are hired part-time. We did have police officers going and opening the gym and have been doing that since that time, but hopefully the new part-time staff will be able to begin and get the gym open. And then once Oconee Gym is closed, we will have Stubbs Gym open for the free play and other activities as needed going forward during that construction time, which is going to be probably about a year or so. So until Oconee Gym and during that construction time, we're going to be discussing as a council and getting feedback about how the Oconee Gym will operate, once we open it back up, what kind of staffing needs we'll have, and then work to get those positions filled and get the program and that the community is addressed and asked for addressed at that time.
All right. And just since we're talking about Oconee, I want to thank the members of the Citizens' Advisory Committee that have been working on the Oconee Gym project with us. I know that they've had multiple meetings to review the concepts. Do we have the final concept?
I'll have to send it.
Okay, so we do have a, after we got input from that committee and from some council members, we do have a sort of a final layout for the Oconee Gym that will guide the process starting in October. So they're going to, Robert's going to try to get that up on the screen as soon as, as soon as we can get that image to you, and we'll definitely be sharing that with the committee and the community.
Can we discuss the additional monies that were allocated to this a couple of months ago to expand the scope of the project as well?
Yeah, if you want to discuss that.
Do you want me to do it? Yeah, so we had originally earmarked $500,000 to go towards the Oconee Gym, and so when the Citizen Advisory Group had met, as well as council members had met and talked about the renovations that were needed, the cost was coming in greater than that, greater than what the grant funding was, greater than what our contribution was going to be. And also, the county had agreed to contribute to the project as well, $500,000. And so the council has had approved additional funding to accomplish the project and redo the hardwood floor and then also make it where the court can have retractable bleachers installed so that the courts can be converted from a one single large court to multiple courts, and that included installing additional goals that can be raised and lowered. And so to accommodate all of that and the cost that came in, the council added an additional $300,000. Yep, I'm trying to make sure I tell you the right amount to the project. So we're now contributing $800,000 plus the grant funds, plus the county's $500,000 contribution. So we're excited to be able to do that.
Okay. And, all right, here we go. So while we've been providing that additional information, Robert was able to get this images up, so.
Can you get onto the floor plan? It's like the.
Could we vote on the motion as on the floor? We have a motion that's been, that's been motioned as second. We're off-topic with the motion.
Yeah, actually, Councilman Jones is correct. We are off-topic from the, what the motion that was seconded is. So at this time, and we'll save this, we'll have this as a discussion as soon as, since we have had a call for, are you calling for a vote, or is there any further discussion on the Stubbs Park request for staff to provide additional pricing information? If there's no additional discussion on the Stubbs Park pricing direction to staff, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, so the ayes have it, and thank you for that, Councilman Jones, for keeping us on track here. And now, just for the public's benefit, you have in front of you the final layout of the Stubbs Gym. Want to thank those committee members who worked on this, and if you have any questions about it, you be free, you're welcome to talk with us after the meeting. Okay, so we now are going to get to our regular agenda items. Item number one, approval of the August 1st City Council Meeting Minutes. Everyone has had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes. Is there any discussion regarding this? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two, approval of bills over $15,000. The list of bills was in your packet. Any questions for staff regarding those bills? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion from Councilman Brown. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three on the agenda is approval of purchases over $15,000. We have three items on the agenda this week. I'd ask for our City Manager to review those items with us.
The first is Gas Department radio read transmitters for converting our existing gas meters to radio read. This is a part of our ongoing process that we've done over the last couple of years to convert over to radio read to make it more efficient to read these meters. This is for 380 gas transmitters from Delta Municipal Supply for $47,500. This was budgeted, and we ask that you approve that purchase. The next is police vehicles for the Police Department. This is for seven new 2025 Ford Police Interceptor SUVs from Wade Ford out of Smyrna, Georgia. The total cost, including the outfitting, is $429,166. The estimated delivery time is 20 to 24 weeks. We have allocated $469,000 of SPOLOST funds to cover this purchase, and so that will, this will come out of the 2024 SPOLOST. The next item is a forklift for the Public Works Maintenance Shop. This is, we budgeted 70, or allocated $70,000 of 2024 SPOLOST dollars to purchase a new heavy-duty forklift for the maintenance shop. This forklift is used not only by the shop but by other departments when necessary. This is for a new 2025 Viper RT-80 from Illinois Lift Equipment for $69,099, and we ask that you approve those three purchases.
All right. We reviewed this at pre-council. Are there any further questions for staff? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the purchases.
We have a motion from Councilman Colby, a second from Councilman Muscara. Any discussion on the motion? I'll just state, I just want the public to know that the police vehicles and the forklift, most of those vehicles and equipment are part of our capital improvement plan that is funded by sales tax dollars, not property tax dollars, but sales tax dollars. So, you know, we have that extra penny sales tax that is being paid by all those people who are coming down the interstate, all the people who are coming from out of town, shopping at our stores in Dublin. And so that is a great thing that we have the sales tax to help fund this equipment and these vehicles.
And the gas is being funded by the gas.
Oh, yeah, and the gas readers are being funded out of the Gas Department proceeds. Do we have any other comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number four on the agenda, which is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the FY24 budget. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance 2406, an ordinance by the Mayor and Council of the City of Dublin to amend the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. The budget has, Section 1 has the previous, previously adopted budget, which revenues and expenses totaled $92,675,089, and that is being amended to $89,704,256. And we ask that council approve that ordinance.
Okay. At this time, we need to close our City Council meeting and open a public hearing to receive comments regarding this proposed ordinance to amend the FY24 budget. So the council meeting is now closed. We have a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this budget amendment, now is your opportunity. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding our city's budget? All right, since there is no one who wishes to speak regarding the budget, we will close the public hearing, and now I'll turn this matter over to council for action. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Brown. This is a roll call vote, so Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Godfrey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Colby.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Or his classes.
All right, thank you for that. We'll now move to item number six, which is a resolution to appoint a municipal court prosecutor. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2439, a resolution by the Mayor and Council of the City of Dublin appointing Cole Porter as the prosecuting attorney for the municipal court of the city pursuant to the Official Code of Georgia annotated, Section 15, 1891, and Chapter 2, Article 8 of the City Code to the City of Dublin, of the City of Dublin, Georgia, to approve and accept the terms of an agreement with Cole Porter for the provision of prosecution services in the municipal court of the City of Dublin to ratify the appointment of assistant prosecutors to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same set and effective date and for other lawful purposes. We advertised for a municipal court prosecutor, which is a part-time, well, it's not a part-time, it's a 1099 contracted position with the city, and it's been advertised for quite a while now, and Mr. Porter had expressed interest recently in being appointed to that position. He meets the qualifications and actually serves as prosecutor currently in Dublin, in Lawrence County Probate Court, so he's very familiar with traffic court, and so staff is recommending that he be appointed as a prosecutor for municipal court. In the event that he has to be absent from court for any reason or has a conflict with a case, then we're also simultaneously recommending that council ratify the appointment of Jacob Poole and Chris Gordon as assistant prosecutors, and that will be up to Mr. Porter to technically appoint them, but it needs to be ratified by the council, so that's what this is doing.
All right. Do we have any questions regarding this? I know we discussed this. Excuse me?
We voting on this?
Yes.
I need to remove myself.
Okay.
Thank the mayor do, too. You didn't recruit yourself.
He doesn't vote.
I don't actually.
He doesn't vote. It don't matter.
I'll be glad to if there's an issue, but I don't have any personal stake in this. But Mayor Protem, if you would like to, to call the vote on this, I will step out. And just for the public's information, Mr. Porter is an employee at the Kite Law Firm, where I have an ownership interest. This appointment, however, is for contract services where I would receive no funds. The money would not flow through my law office at all, and I'd have no supervision or relationship with this appointment. But since, and I disclosed all this to council, so, but just for appearances' sake, I'll be glad to step out of the room, and if the Mayor Protem will conduct the remainder of this. Thank you.
Can I just share with everyone that even though we have three people that we are asking to be a part of this, that they will not get paid unless they actually sit in the courtroom that day?
Right.
Because I had a problem with having three. But they won't get paid unless they actually do the court that day, so just want to share that information. And so now, we need to make a motion to approve.
So moved. Indeed. We got a motion on the floor, a second by.
Make a motion on the floor by Mr. Councilman Bill Brown, and a second by Councilman Chris Smith. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Carries three to one.
Carries, though, right?
Four to one.
Four to one. Okay, okay.
Ain't no fool.
Three.
One, two, three.
Four, four, that's right. Oh, yeah, Paul.
Yeah, four to one. My bad. Yeah, four to one.
Who cares?
I'm looking at Paul. I will, too. I ain't seen Paul's in there. I'm counting Paul as Josh.
They can come back in now.
Come here.
Mayor, y'all could come back in now.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem, for handling that matter. We'll now move to item number seven on the agenda, which is discussion and action on a resolution to appoint a public defender. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2440, a resolution by the Mayor and Council of the City of Dublin, Georgia, appointing Vernah Smith as the public defending attorney for the municipal court of the city to approve and accept the terms of an agreement with Vernah Smith for the provision of public defender services in the municipal court of the City of Dublin to authorize the court to appoint substitute or conflict public defenders as needed, to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same set and effective date and for other lawful purposes. Ms. Smith has provided public defender services in municipal court for a number of years now. She always does a good job with that, and staff is asking that she be, well, appointed now as continuing a public defender for municipal court.
All right. You've heard Mr. Powell's explanation of Ms. Vernah Smith's proposed contract. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Colby, a second from Councilman Brown. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number eight, which is discussion and action on a declaration of surplus. Mr. Powell.
We have four items for council's consideration for surplus tonight. One's a vibratory roller, a John Deere tractor, some traffic counters from Engineering Department, and a Panasonic Toughbook from the Police Department.
All right. Any questions for staff regarding this surplus products, our surplus items? If not, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs. We have a second, second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, that ends our regular agenda items for this evening. We'll now move into citizens' comments. As always, we have a three-minute limit. As always, we have a three-minute limit on citizens' comments. We welcome any comments from the public. Our clerk, Heather Browning, will give you an indication when your time is up if you start going a little bit long. Would anyone like to make a comment this evening? All right, Ms. Bloodworth.
How you all doing? I am Ray Bloodworth. I live in Ward 4. I'd just like to ask a question. You all, we received comments from the community two weeks ago, all in favor of keeping the Stubbs Gym. You also had a 70% vote in keeping when you did the survey. So you presented an artificial intelligent picture to the citizens here about what you want to do for the gym. Why isn't it that you all listen to the citizens about keeping the gym and doing the renovation? Why you have to go about changing it when the citizen already spoke? Help me understand that. I mean, you all looking like, oh, well. I mean, the citizen had already spoken, and didn't you bring something else when today you supposed to cast a vote to tear down or keep it? Come on, help me understand that. It's time to stop all of that. It's time to listen to these citizens and give them what they asked for. They elected you. Now work for them.
All right, thank you for your comments, Ms. Bloodworth. Does anyone else have any comments this evening? Any other citizens' comments? All right, if not, we'll close citizens' comments and see if we have any comments from staff. Mr. Gordon?
No comment.
All right, Ms. Browning?
No comment, thank you.
All right, we'll begin with you, Mr. Brown, for our council comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to just thank everybody for being here. Appreciate your comments, Ms. Bloodworth. Thank you, staff, for the work that you've put in place for this meeting today. Also, want to just be mindful that school has started, you've got children that are on the streets, being picked up by school buses, parents traveling and taking kids to school. Let's pray for them to have safety, pray for their learning ability this year, and also keep the teachers, administrators, and everybody that's involved with teaching our kids, because, you know, that's what we're here for. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, and I appreciate your voice and opinion. When it came to the town hall meeting on Tuesday, we thank you for coming out. Your voice is always heard, and we do plan on having another one soon, so we're going to look out for that, and we'll be having another one. And I do agree, I believe in giving people what they want. When people ask for something, give them what they want, that way I can hold them accountable. I did it when I was in the military. I've done it when I've been in supervisory role. You ask for it, I can hold you accountable for whether or not this work or not. So I do believe in listening to people and giving them what they want. That way, you can't say, well, you didn't get them what we asked for, because I do believe, don't give them what I asked for. If I asked for a biscuit and you give me a stone, don't get mad at me because I don't eat it. I didn't ask for a, I didn't ask for that stone, I asked for a biscuit. So I believe in giving you what you want. So your voices were heard, and I just say, keep coming, keep coming, keep coming, keep listening, keep letting your voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Godfrey.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you all for coming out. Now, my thought process as far as the Stubbs Park Gym being knocked down or renovated, I was thinking that we would want something new, because we haven't had anything new in that area in so many years. But if you want to keep an old gym renovated, we're going to get the pricing for that, as well as just getting the pricing for a new bill. So that's my thought process, and I understand that you all want to keep the gym, and we will go back and talk about this again. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, let's maintain order in the audience, please. Thank you for those comments, Ms. Godfrey. Ms. Colby, any comments this evening?
Yeah, I'm just so excited to see so much participation and everybody showing up to present their opinions and the way that they would like their city to look. I think it's important, this master planning process has been going on for over a year, and it'll continue for many more years to come. We know that this is not a short process, and so stick with it, keep voicing your opinions and sharing what you would like, and we're going to continue digging down deep into the numbers and what you want, and continue to listen and continue this planning process. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for that, Councilman Colby. Councilman Griggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming and hope you have a good, safe weekend.
Thank you for that. Councilman Smith.
Well, I also want to thank everyone for coming, and I thank everyone for showing up. I hope some of the questions that was asked at the town hall meeting was addressed by city manager Josh Powell, and just to thank you guys for showing up again. I mean, the discussion went from tearing down the gym to having a clean slate, to now we're talking about a full renovation. So I thank you guys for showing up so we can make progress, we can make change, and we can give you guys what you want, so I just want to give you guys a pat on the back for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Mascara.
I want to thank everybody else, everyone for coming out, and I echo what most people sitting up here said. Specifically, I want to thank you all for coming to your city council meetings, and I hope that this same presence is at your county commissioner meetings as well. Your city is working hard for you. We are doing what, by and large, you ask us to do, and we understand that not everybody's going to be happy all the time. We're doing what is laid out before us with the funds that we have, and my position in all of this is that you have to look at your county commissioners, because they also represent you as well. And so it's very easy for people to say that the city of Dublin's not doing our part, but we're running a tight budget, and I just say you go put pressure on your city, your county commissioners as well, to get them to step up for you and do their part. The city's working very hard to satisfy our residents, and we can only do as much as we can do with what we have to work with. And we're trying, and we've been very benefit, we've been benefited greatly by some of the efforts of going and getting grant money and making progress in certain areas. But guys, we cannot, we can't do this without partnerships and cooperation, and it's not always all in the city. When you look at your tax bill, there are three line items on it. It's the county, it's Lawrence County, it's the city of Dublin, and it's Dublin City Schools. And I just, I want you to go look at them and see where most of your taxes are going.
All right, thank you for those comments. With no other comments, we now stand adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Yeah. We got hired at the gym at least a part from hard time. I don't know when she's.